allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And on the nation under God and in this world with liberty and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We okay, Chris? Okay.
You want me to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Chairman Krimsky.
Here.
Pal McMahon, absent. Tony Springer.
Yeah.
Josh Fisher.
Here.
Dane Morton.
Here.
Jason Tyler.
Here.
Barb Conway, she's here vis. At her house. Howard Schaefer.
Here.
That's it, okay.
Okay. Constable Niles asked us to look at the short term rentals again in the form of a workshop. But Mr. Niles is looking for some feedback from us about the idea of regulating where they may be allowed. And we also need to discuss the zoning map as part of the discussion. Our lawyer, Mr. Crowe suggests that we don't have public comment on it. The town board is looking for our feedback. The public will have the opportunity to comment on it directly to the town. Okay. What Jim Niles and I discussed was, and I guess it's the town board discussing and putting it out there, restricting short term rentals in some areas. What were, how many areas were there? Were like two or?
They were, they. We met with Chairman Pallett from the zoning board of appeals, John Krimsky, myself and Councilman Niles and Jim Niles wanted us to look at the possibility of restricting where short term rentals are allowed. Not that they're going to do that, but he wants your feedback on that idea. And we talked about restricting them. Well, we talked about where they seem to be. And I think Josh has got a better handle on that now than we certainly did at the time. And we were talking about, should we regulate them, restrict them in a particular zone, two particular zones, whatever, or come up with a new overlay to the zoning map and, you know, call it something, whether it's short term rental overlay or something. And pick and choose areas within the town where they might not be allowed. And so we were discussing all of that. That's what Jim asked John to bring back to the board to get your feedback on whether or not you feel they should be not allowed in certain areas. So you kind of need to discuss your, that before we discuss, well, if you think they should be not allowed in some areas.
Right.
Then where do you think they should be not allowed? So though it's kind of a two part question. In doing all that, we were looking at zoning map and, and we had the discussion before that this white map that you guys should all have is the official zoning map for the town. This is very old. It was done back in the eighties. Says eighty-two on here. So it's not even accurate anymore. And everything on the back of it is old zoning ordinance regulations. Those don't apply anymore. So we were looking at the map and.
Bring those guys, one of the big ones down.
Yeah, if you want. I called the county planning department and, and asked her, she had given me this. Well, there's only, I only brought one in, but I had brought in a new map that the county has made for me that's color coded with all the zones and it's bigger than that map. And there are issues with the zoning. Um, parcels, I guess is what I want to say. Mike Crowe, the attorney has told me that the the state frowns on properties having more than one zone in it. We have a lot of that in our town. And so we are looking at, eventually looking at this map and trying to make the zone lines more in line with what they're supposed to be. They're supposed to follow roads, rivers, streams, lakes, property lines. Things like that. And again, there are many parcels that contain more than one zone and we're looking at, we're going to take a look at that somewhere. Probably in the comprehensive plan process or the, when we redo the zoning ordinance process, redoing the map and, and making the lines more sensible. So anyway, we use what we have as a guide, but the discussion needs to be, what are your thoughts about regulating where they go? You know, maybe not allowing them in certain areas or do you think that's not a good idea? And if, if you want, if you think it's a good idea to regulate them, do you want it? Again, in particular zones, or do you think the idea of doing an overlay and picking and choosing where they should go? Now, all of that being said, we will not be making the decision. We are just recommending to the town board. The town board will make the decision in the long run as to where they go with it and what they do with it. Whether they regulate them, you know, not allow them some places or not, but it's they, they want your recommendation as a board because your role as the planning board is to make decisions that are best suited for the town, the people in the town, both residents and business owners. So.
Do you, the one thing I didn't ask Jim was, and I think they came to us, or he did, representing the board, that they're leaning towards this. I mean, why else would they do that? Cause originally it was just going to be blanked in.
I don't know that they are leaning towards it. I, I have been very reluctant to say that.
Okay.
There is argument out there. I mean, you guys have heard a lot of the discussions. About the, how, how these short term rentals are affecting neighborhoods in the town, which we're also hearing from the people that own these. What they bring into the town, they bring in revenues, they bring in taxes, they, you know, they bring more people in that eventually end up buying long term because they like the area. So there are pros and cons to whether, you know, on this short term rental issue. And so they just kind of want you to, you know, talk it over, see what you think and make some recommendation to them. I I am not a hundred percent sure that they are going to say they cannot be in some areas.
Right.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure that they won't do that either. I mean, I, I have no idea what the board will do.
I, I zoomed in on the last workshop they had. And there were people that made good points, both.
Right.
Ones that will have it and the ones that don't. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a tough decision for them.
And once they compile whatever they end up deciding, it will be put out there to the public in a public hearing. And they will, you know, get the feedback from the public. And then decide whether they adopt it or not. I mean, this is all.
You know what I, I, and I think we're just getting a small amount of public that come to the hearing or go on Zoom. Something that the master plan board is doing is there's like this monkey poll or whatever they call it.
Monkey survey.
Anyway.
That's okay, John. I got, I knew what you meant.
It reaches, I guess, twenty-four hundred people in the town. You know, and to get, really get, I mean, yes, I mean, that's what we ask them to do. It's gonna, as far as.
And that's.
Right, comprehensive plan. All right, on our website, there's a thing at the bottom where you sign up for the emails and that's how, everybody that's on that. Yeah. You have to, it's really easy. I'll show you. Well, if you, if you go to.
They, they originally set it up.
Like, like Luzern, this, this one, if you go to the very bottom, it says. Here it is. Subscribe to the town news. You put your email in there and now you're on that monkey survey. Cause I signed, well, that night we had.
Have you, have you gotten the survey?
No, we haven't sent out the survey. We're gonna do it in November. After our meeting in November. But I mean, it's a way that I think maybe they should encourage people to do this. So they get, you know, what if, you know, twenty people want it and two thousand don't. I mean, this, they're gonna get a good show happening. I think. And more people will be interested. Like the meeting we had for the master plan that was here, where we had so many people, they put it on there. Monkey survey. And that's why we had so many people. Survey monkey. I, I just think that's a good way to get to, to everybody in the town because I like, I see more people involved. You know, cause maybe you've got ten people that are really, really want this and only eight that don't. Well, the town's gonna, the board's gonna say, well, you know, it's overwhelming. We will by doing this survey. Maybe they're gonna find out that people really don't want it.
You know, if I could.
It's a thought, it's a thought. One way or another.
Right.
So the people that are middle ground kind of stay back and are quiet, but yet if they can.
They could do it on a survey. And they only ask like, we're only gonna ask like maybe five to 10 questions. Just keep it small.
You know, if I could ask a question, I know Josh put together some interesting research. Maybe it might make sense as a start for Josh to sort of recap what his findings were from that one day investigation he did.
Yeah, I mean, I think I gave you the gist of it in the email. Very interesting. So I was kind of expecting them to be more in the heights. Heavily concentrated Lake Venier Lake Forest. About half were up there and that's already zone residential resort, right?
Uh, yes.
So I mean, I guess the obvious thing, if they do want to apply the zoning to short term rentals is include the residential resort zoning, right? So that takes care of half of them.
Heavy in, in the HR, Lake Benar area.
Yeah, residential resort, zone residential resort. You know, so that kind of takes care of half of them. And then you know, if this is the direction they want to take, you know, what do you do with residential town, Hamlet residential? So if you can figure out what you want to do with those two, you're almost got them all covered. I mean, there's a few scattered in the other zones.
I'm wondering if we could, I don't like to assume anything, but could we assume if you look at, uh, say January and February for ski season and snowmobile season and May and June leading up to the July, August season. I'm wondering if residential Hamlet would have more properties available.
Yeah, well, there would be a shift. Yeah, I mean, it'd be neat.
Cause that could actually change every day, couldn't it? I mean, this is like one snapshot of one day.
In September, so. You know, probably not peak season, but you know, not the dead winner either, so. You know, I don't really have a strong opinion on it. I don't really have a good sense what anybody else is thinking on it, but.
And didn't you say that you, this wasn't really everybody, it just kind of was.
So yeah, what I ran into was I did Airbnb, I mapped them all out and then I said, well, I'll go to the V-Bro or whatever, the next one.
Right.
So I started pulling properties on V-Bro and I was seeing duplicate. So I figured then if I mapped out all of V-Bro, it really wouldn't be a fair analysis, you know what I mean? So I just left it there. I guess if you could, you know, clear the map and go to V-Bro and map them out, see what came up and see.
And VRBO in hotels also.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, if we wanted to dig into a little bit more, we could, we could do a fresh map with VRBO and see what came up and see if we get a different concentration, different areas.
Which.
Could probably, you know, the town board. Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I came up with. They're everywhere though. I think they hit every single zone.
One, except for Hamlet Industrial.
Right.
We have an industrial.
I don't think houses are allowed there. I think that's why.
You know, I don't mind. I don't think it's a big deal to go in. I could probably do it once a month if you guys are curious.
I wonder if we could, can we go back in time on that? In other words, can you pick the dates to say, you know, July first or something? I wonder.
It's like renting a hotel, you can't go backwards.
Uh, I see.
You can only do future.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I could try taking a snapshot every month. I mean, I don't know how long, I don't want to drag it out.
That would be interesting.
You know.
Well, this is.
Curious to see what January.
Now, when I went in, I didn't put any dates. I just left the dates wide open. I just left it wide open.
Is these, are these numbers seem to match up with, because the town had some numbers too, right?
Yeah, it was a list that they had gotten from the county treasurer's office and I don't know if it matches up or not. We found that that list is not accurate though, because for one thing, the addresses, some of the addresses on it are not right. What, what has happened is someone that runs a short term rental, their home address was listed on the list instead of the actual property of where the short term rental was. So and that person had more than one short term rental and it wasn't delineated out on that list. So we found that that list is not accurate. And then one of the members of the zoning board did something similar to what you did. He went online and spent one evening pulling off, you know, places that were advertised and was trying to figure out where they were in town against that list. And he found many more. And so that, that list is definitely not accurate. I don't know. You know, and I haven't questioned the treasurer's office simply because that list has caused some problems in that we are now, when someone from the public asked for the list from the county, because that's where the list was generated, the county told that person that it was not a foilable paper. So meanwhile, I had distributed it to both boards. And I'm sure, I don't know if anyone gave it out personally from those boards. But all of, so I contacted the lawyer and he told me that the list, it's, it's a foilable form, but that you'd have to redact all the addresses on it. So the list is absolutely no good. If you take all the addresses off it, so. Anyway, as I said, we've already found that there, it's not, the list wasn't all that accurate.
Wasn't there a town that already restricts it? I know like, a lot of them don't, like Lake George.
Lake George does, Lake Georgetown and Village do restrict it. They have different zones than we do. And they have restricted them to in the village, they're only allowed basically in the commercial area, which is the first two streets in the village widths. You know, the width of the village down through right route nine. And the town has restricted them to quasi-commercial areas and it's some of the lakefront properties that they are, there's, there's own residential and commercial both somehow. So yes, Lake Georgetown and Village have regulated where they will go. Now what they did was because their regulations came into place after people had already established having them, they grandfathered in any that existed. And but if someone goes to sell one of those properties where they're no longer allowed, they cannot be sold as a short term rental. They, they have to revert back to resi- purely residential use. But they grandfathered in any that already existed.
So basically, everybody got grandfathered as a day.
And, and remember, we're kind of talking about two different things here. One is the permitting process. And one is, will they be allowed or not in certain areas? And don't confuse the grandfathering in and the grace period time between the two. If, if, if they, where these towns regulated where they could not be, they grandfathered in the ones that existed. But the properties could not be resold as a short term rental property. And the real estate agents know to call the town and say, is this an allowed area or not? I spoke to one of the people in town that regulates this and that, and he's, he told me that. Now, and I, and I hate to even speak about it to confuse the issue. When they make the regulations about, you know, people registering where they are in the town and if they end up making it that they have to have an inspection and you know, limit the number of people based on bedrooms and, you know, look at parking and all of that. If, if an air, if someone already owns a short term, they will be probably, and they haven't voted on this, they will probably be given a grace period to come in line because if they have to make corrections and changes, you've got to work with them to give them time to do that. You can't just say you've got to have this done within a month, you know? So they probably will give them a grace period for that.
Okay, so I think the first thing we have to come to an agreement on, I guess, is, well, how do we feel about allowing them out everywhere or should?
Can I, can I offer a thought if I could? And John, you could perhaps bear this out, but I, I know this is an evolving conversation here in town and from speaking with both property owners and with members of the town board. I can't speak for any individual member of the town board, but it seems like, and John, you could tell me if this seems to make sense or not, but it seems like uh, the thinking is if enforcement is going to be a very cumbersome piece of this issue, then might it make more sense to do what Lake George did or to do what they do in Cape Cod or in Venice Beach or in Key West? And that is to allow short term rentals in certain parts of a zoned district and to not allow short term rentals in other districts. For example, in Lake Luzern, perhaps permitting it in certain commercial areas, not permitting it in Hamlet Residential or in let me back up. Allowing it in certain Hamlet, allowing it in certain res- commercial areas and not allowing it in Hamlet Residential.
I think whether they are allowed in all areas or part areas, somebody's still gonna have to oversee it. So I don't think that really is a difference, because
Yeah.
if you, even if you have, don't have it in certain areas, the other areas still have to be, they still have to register, they still gonna have to go through the process.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's necessarily has anything to do with it. It's just, I think it's just if the town wants it. And I think based on what I'm hearing and saying is then maybe they need to get more people involved through the survey to see if their town really wants it.
Can I ask the question?
Sure.
We gave a recommendation already to the town board. What was their feedback on our original recommendation? Did they have feedback?
They, they have incorporated some of what you recommended into the regulation that they are putting together. So they did use it. They did, you know, they, they listened to both boards and have put I don't know if I have that with me. They've put together a a, it's what they're calling a, a rough, rough draft.
Was that the warrants, based on the Warrensburg plan?
And in it, wherever they highlighted things that haven't been resolved yet, grandfather or not, change ad zoning and like here, short term permit shall be valid for three years. This is a change. Zoning Board of Appeal says one year. So they, that's what they did. They, they've added comments throughout this. Again, they're calling it a rough, rough draft, which incorporated comments from both the zoning and the planning board.
Or any conflicting.
Yeah, and like, yeah, and like fee amount, they've got a question mark in that septic inspection requirements. They've got, you know, question marks. So the, these are things that haven't been resolved yet, but they did add comments. Like here, they want the contact person to be less than a half an hour away. And that, you know, that was some of the stuff that we came up with. Adding street names instead of just posting house numbers, make sure a street neighbor is there as well. The, so they've, they've taken your recommendations and they plugged it in here, even if it hasn't been resolved, the comment is in here for them to be looking at and talking about.
You know, the, the emphasis of that Warrensburg plan is, seems to be more focused on the income that the town can generate, which is fine. There's nothing in there about neighborhood preservation.
Yes, there is. I mean, it's, it's all about security. It's all about the property. It's all about, there's quiet hours. If everything was in there.
How's that gonna be enforced though?
We put in there, they're gonna be fined.
Yeah.
Um, the property owner had to be listed on the house right inside the door. They had to answer the first response. If it was not taking care of, if the sheriff was called, the property owner is gonna be fined and their permit can be revoked at any time if there's any kind of disturbance. Well, it was very, I mean.
And I think that goes whether they have it in all areas or just part, anyway, it's gonna have to be.
It's, somebody's gonna have to enforce this.
I just.
That's a good point though, is how is it going to be enforced? I haven't looked at it all the way through. And one of the comments that came from a, a member of the zoning board, but he didn't give it to the board as a member of the zoning board. He gave it to the board as being a citizen of the town. He, he felt that the town should probably hire what he called a short term rental coordinator to oversee issuing the permits, you know, checking the properties. If there are issues, being the person that goes and enforce, you know, and does an enforcement action type of thing. So they, that was brought up at a town board meeting that he, he had that idea.
We actually discussed that also.
Yeah.
Saying that one person had to be in charge of doing all the inspections and making sure everything was taken care of.
Yeah.
I guess the only reason why I question that is that Lake Luzern hasn't had a town constable in years. We're having a tough time getting a zoning enforcement deputy person. How realistic is it that we would have a uh, short term rental coordinator who would oversee this?
Well, I don't know what decision the town board's gonna make. These ideas have just been thrown out to them.
Yeah.
To decide what they're going to do. As far as the deputy zoning enforcement officer, they interviewed someone Monday night at the agenda meeting and I think they're probably going to hire that person.
Good.
Has there been any discussion about small tax you can put on them in order to pay for these things for the town? Like I guess, when you look at it, you know, it's like a cost benefit analysis, right? Are we, are we getting more out of them? You know, than they're giving us, you know what I mean? So if, if they're providing the town with something, money to pave roads and pay for a town constable and, you know, I think that the board would be much more willing to say, okay, you know, it's good, there, there policies around them, they're regulated.
So can, is, can?
I mean, I go to, like, when I go on vacation, I, you know, I go to North Carolina. They hit me with three different taxes for, for being there as a tourist, you know, I mean, to pay for these types of things.
Fees.
Right, there's all kinds of fees. You know, so if it paves or if.
I know that the occupancy tax that the town gets through the county, that the county collects cannot be used for anything other than to promote tourism. So that money could not be used.
What could there be?
There can't be a local test.
That's, it's possible that there could be. I don't know. That's a lawyer. Uh, that's, uh, it's possible um that there could be, I don't know, that's a lawyer. Question, but I'm I'll make a note of that. Could, do we want to call it a what a a tax then or some kind of a tax?
An assessment fee?
When I rent in other states.
Tax be levied.
Rent uh short term rental tax, rental fee or.
We gotta get our streets paved and our sidewalks upgraded and landscaping and it makes the town a better place.
If you've ever rented a car at an airport, there's a laundry list of taxes, or they call them assessments.
So instead, all that revenue going to, you know, the owners that live outside of the area, some of it staying here for the town. So I don't know if it's possible or not.
Well, we'll put it out there.
I I know I'm kind of overthinking this, may maybe I'm right or wrong. But um in all fairness. For us to give a recommendation one way or another, I don't think is, I mean, some might be against, some might be for. It's the town what they want. I mean, yes, we're gonna, we're there, they're the planning board, but us to say, well, this is what we think you should do. We're only seven people versus, I don't know how many people live there down, three thousand five, whatever. Is that really fair? And the board says, oh, the planning board recommended we do this or we don't do this. I mean, I'd like to. Maybe make that decision, but is it really fair to the public for us to push something either way? And, you know.
Well, when we report back to the board, we can certainly, we we you don't have to vote. First of all, you don't have to vote on this anyway, but we could give them a report that, you know. You know.
Maybe pros and cons of each.
Yeah, yeah.
So what was that?
Or that.
Pros and cons of each.
You know, one member. You know, voted one way, you know, I don't know if we'd want to, I don't know if you want to put names now.
Then then we're like putting somebody on the spot.
Yeah.
Well, they're asking us for a recommendation, you know, I mean, when you think.
Not recommendation, feedback.
Feedback, so when when the people on the planning board were selected by the town board, they're saying, okay, you have a pretty good idea of what's going on. We value your judgment, uh, whatever other criteria they're using. Could I make a suggestion and only if the board is okay with this?
Well, you can make a suggestion, then you'll find out whether they're okay with it or not.
Right, okay, so sometimes in organizations I've been involved with, instead of taking a vote, we'll take a informal survey, non binding. There is this um petition going around town, probably everybody's seen it, I sent a copy of it. And the language and I'll I'll be brief, it says, uh, the undersigned respectfully request the Luzerne Town Board to eliminate short term rentals. In Lake Luzerne's residential Hamlet neighborhoods while permitting short term rentals for a minimum thirty day stay or whatever in commercial zones. Uh, this group asking that this legislation take effect X Y Z date, no allowance for grandfathering whatsoever, so. If we were to take an informal, non binding survey right now. If if this is okay with you, John, as chairman. Could we sort of take the temperature of the seven people here to see? Is there support for making a recommendation? For allowing and disallowing short term rentals based on zones?
I don't think we should.
I don't think we should.
What's your thinking?
It's 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 not part of our job, it's not for us to do that. My, I'm not gonna tell you what my opinion is, I'm supposed to serve the public based on the planning board's laws.
Okay.
For me to decide. I don't think that's that's our part to say, yeah, this is what we should do, that's my feeling, but other people feel different.
I think our job is to represent everybody.
Right.
And I don't think we have enough facts that have presented to us to say, yes, we zone and there absolutely no rentals there. Or yes, this one should have tons of rentals because we don't have enough facts. We have neighbors that aren't happy, so absolutely they don't want houses there, but you know, a neighbor on the other side might not have an issue. So that's not fair, that the squeaky wheel is gonna get the zoning when we have not been given enough information to make that decision from this community.
That's why.
That's my.
The survey that that's out there might give us, give the town a better idea, not us, the town.
Because personally, no matter what question you bring up, I can give you a pro and a con for it, every single one of them.
And they're both good, they're both valid. I can't disagree with either one of them, you know? But for for me to give my opinion, that's not for me to do on this board, I'm not supposed to give my opinion, I'm supposed to follow what the town wants me to do and I give my opinion. They want my feedback on what on this, my feedback is they need more information from the town.
More information from citizens.
Citizens of the town.
Yeah, I like the idea of the survey, to be honest with you, as long as it can reach out, you know.
Yeah, the survey monkey is is a valuable tool and it doesn't cost anything.
And that's wrong.
Oh.
It costs ninety nine dollars.
Okay, ninety nine dollars, it's inexpensive.
Right, yes, well, they they granted it for the the uh. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I think putting this earlier is the next step.
I just don't think that's our job as planning board to say, you know, this is what you should do or our, these are, this is our feedback, we think this should be done. I don't, what are your feelings on that?
As has already been stated, I think there are two sides, you know, and and both are pretty compelling. You know, in in terms of. What I think should be done, I do think there needs to be some sort of regulation, just so that it's not crazy, like it's similar to. The RV thing, you know, I'm still driving around town and seeing RVs in places where I don't really necessarily believe there should be RVs and I don't think they're they're good for the neighborhood, you know? With that said, how far do you go with it? I, you know, I I do think the. Lake George's approach that you were talking about Karen, with the ones that have already existed, if we were to take away. Um, from certain zones and stuff like that, grandfathering them in um until they're sold. I think that's a a good compromise and I think this issue is gonna need a ton of compromise, you know, on on both sides, so.
But do you think it's our job as a planning board to do that?
To make a recommendation?
Yes.
I mean, without knowing, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you the the laws of the, I don't know the laws of the planning board, you know, the town board's asking us.
We follow the laws of the town board that set out this.
Yeah.
And there's nothing in there that, you know, we can't say, well, this is what we think this should change.
I feel like that's what they're asking us, all right, the town board.
They're asking for feedback, not necessarily a recommendation.
What would be the the definition of feedback then, I guess?
And the feedback we gave on those RVs years ago, nothing's been done.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that to me is a completely different issue that needs to be addressed.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I I just, I guess I'd have to know what feedback means then.
I just think this thing's too big for us just to say something and then everybody down in town, when it comes down to the. To the end says, well, the planning board suggested we do this and the town board went for it. Well, there's only seven people on the town board, what about the rest of the people?
I would make a comment that I believe there's a lot of back and forth between, I can't speak for the zoning board because I don't know what's going on. Between the planning board and the town board kind of passing the buck to try to nail one or the other on this.
And it's their responsibility.
Well, yeah, you know, and maybe that's gonna be our feedback, you know, but um. At some point, I think somebody's got to kind of step up and and bite the bullet on, you know?
They keep coming back, like, they can't make a decision.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Recommendation already, we gave them our recommendation in writing. How we thought.
I got it right.
Our our best thoughts and ideas to protect everybody, we gave to them.
But then they started to get feedback from citizens, which is great, while public hearing that they wanted it, you know, restricted. Okay, well, that's your decision to make, you know, we can't make a decision or restriction because you're gonna have to make the law, they're gonna have to make the law to restrict.
This paper right here with the short term rentals from July nineteenth, that's, those were our recommendations, right? That's from that meeting, okay. I mean, I I guess then my recommendation now maybe to just kind of go through this line by line and readdress the recommendations that we've already made and see if there's been any changes, I don't know. Because I don't know what they're looking for, you know, other than to.
Well, it's more the, it's more the discussion of. Do you think that short term rentals should be? Banned in some areas in the town? And that's basically what they're, this is what they're looking for. I mean, they've already gotten your other recommendations and that was not part of it. So the new conversation has come up, do you feel? That short term rental should be banned in area, in certain areas of the town?
We made these, we were going according to all the other towns that were up.
Towns around.
You know, Lake George on their own decided they were gonna restrict it, their board, not their planning board, not their zoning board. You know, and I I.
But Lake George is a lot different than us.
True.
Warrensburg and Bullwater are more.
And they don't restrict it, not that we shouldn't. Not saying that.
I think in a lot of ways, it's much easier for Lake George to restrict it just to commercial areas, you know, because that town is so focused on the lake. Um, I was reading one of the letters here, just kind of stating that. Our town, while we don't necessarily have that big ticket item like Lake George, we have many small lakes and stuff that are desirable, which makes it more complicated for us because the neighborhoods. All all the neighborhoods around us are just as desirable as as the others, for the most part, you know? So I think it was easy for Lake George to make that call. In kind of preparation for this meeting and what I was looking at and kind of what I was thinking. Um, if the planning board was leaning towards the the basing it off of zoning, I was gonna kind of throw out there that. Just thinking of in my head, what what would be the reasoning to necessarily restrict the cabin that's on five acres and away from everybody? Would there be any reason to do that? Because that, you know, if we were just limited to commercial areas.
Right.
You know, that would make zero sense to me personally, you know, and those might be some of our most desirable areas.
Very little commercial property.
In Luzerne.
In Luzerne.
Yeah, so so by by limiting it just to commercial areas or even just to residential resort areas. Um, we're really not giving, we're essentially banning it in the town in a lot of ways. But to me, if I'm going on vacation, I'm looking for that house on five acres away from it, I'm not trying to get, you know what I mean? So a stipulation that I was gonna suggest or recommend or however you want to call it. Would be maybe put an acreage limit on in some of those other zones um as a possibility. I know they've done that in some other towns. Um, I've got some family members that own Airbnbs in Massachusetts and Connecticut, and that's one of the things that they do is they'll put a lot size um in. Zones where um like certain zones, they'll completely permit it, for example, like commercial, in certain zones, they would limit, you know, it's a lot size and stuff like that, you know, just as a an added kind of safeguard. But what's right, you know?
Right, that's that's if they want to restrict the zones.
If they want, yeah, exactly, if you want to restrict the zones, you know, so.
But like you said, you wanna go, you wanna go into the woods when you go on vacation, somebody else wanna, might wanna be right in town, right on the lake. Somebody else might want to be on thirty acres. Somebody might want to be on a stream to go fishing, so how do we control? The future of our town where people want to come and stay?
I think my big, my biggest point personally, and I think Josh, you're kind of getting at this. Is to make sure that the town is getting something out of this, not just tourism for the county and stuff like that, but the town itself. Luzerne, and I was gonna bring up a separate issue, I'll wait for a different meeting with that. But Luzerne is a is a whole, it's always kind of been a destination, but it hasn't been nearly as popular or popular as it has been recently, and it's growing in popularity. So it's important to get ahead of these issues, this we're not necessarily ahead of, you know, there's some other issues coming up that we could be. But um, you know, just. We got to deal with with this sooner rather than later, going back and forth, you know.
Well, why do you say we have to do it? I mean, do, well, they make the law, I mean, it's.
No, they they make the law, yeah, no, of course.
Somebody that works for Karen and Karen herself is gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the other issue too, like you were saying, enforcement.
Yeah, there was somebody, well, your brother, the zoning board made a recommendation, they need uh. Hire somebody just to deal with that short term round, once they decide to have them, you know.
So we're at a net loss for paying that salary, to me, it's like.
And that's why I wonder if you do the occupancy tax to do that.
And then we have the revenues for that going to people who knows New York City, I I'm not looking from Lake Luzerne, I mean, I don't know how many local people have their RVs in town, but.
I'd be surprised.
They're they're the town.
They do, I mean, then there are people in Lake Luzerne making money off of it, you know what I mean, but um.
I I hate to use the state as an example, right, but the state like with million dollar beach, right? That's that's the big asset in Lake George, they charge money to go to that beach to pay for state expenses or, you know, Luzerne needs to be doing that. In in a lot of different areas, but the the Airbnb's, you know, um, for sure, you know, to make sure that's. If you're looking for town assets and how the town can generate money, it's it's kind of screaming in in the face right now, you know, the demand is there for sure, you know, so in terms of that. I'm all for putting that.
I mean, I don't, I don't know who in town would be pushing back on that, right?
Pushing back on what?
On taxing the Airbnb's a little bit, like, why would anybody in town resist that anyway? I mean, all it does is benefit us, right?
I honestly don't think that the, you know, as long as you do it evenly across the board, the the Airbnb owners.
Well, they would just pass it on.
Yeah, they're just gonna pass it, that's what I'm saying, they're just gonna pass it on, so right now, it's just something that the town is missing out on, it's too, in my opinion.
Yeah, because right now we have nothing.
Nothing, yeah, no.
I just, I'm gonna throw this out there as well, that um the assessor went to classes about a week ago. And the short term rental um issue was brought up in in their classes that they had for the assessors. Because um it's also causing issues with. People's assessments and again, um Melissa Janier, who's our assessor, could speak certainly better than I. But we, she was telling me, it's, you know, what they had brought up, but. Because it's new to the assessors as well, they're, you know, they're seeing that it's driving the. Price, the market price of houses up, and so do you raise the assessment of those houses up because they're generating in, you know. You can't really do that, but it's causing a problem in the assessment field as well as other things, I mean, it's. It's a new issue uh that a lot, you know, statewide, a lot of towns are looking at and trying to. Grasp and deal with and um so. You know, I'd like to say that the town may came up, may come up with regulations and rules and. They may end up having to come back and revisit them and change them and tweak them a little bit down the road as they find out how these things. You know, work as time goes on.
I I think if the town came to us and said, you know, we're we're thinking of regulating, what are your, what's your feedback? I think that would be a better question than just, you know, should we regulate? Well, I think you decide that, not us.
So if the town decides. Town board, let's put it that way. Regulate.
I don't know what.
Yeah, it's been quiet down there.
I I'm, you know, it's it's kind of a. And I find us kind of passing the torch on of the topic. Because, you know, planning boards and zoning boards are are reactive based on. Existing laws within that town and and if we have to, and I wouldn't call it enforced, but ensure that those are followed through. So like, I don't even think this topic is at that finish line yet for us to really. Provide feedback on it up until the town board decides what they want to do.
I agree, that's that's kind of my point too.
Yeah.
It's like I just said, if they said, all right, we're gonna probably do this, what's your feedback now?
Right.
Because we want to regulate, well, okay, now we'll get right into the nuts and bolts of it, because you're, you decided, you want to regulate it. But why should we decide if we're gonna regulate? And you're the, you're gonna make the final vote, it's gonna be your decision.
Right. And and even walking into this process, you know, or you you put a plan in place for anything, you're, you know, whatever preparation you have to get to the finish line. But, you know, enforcement, I feel like is the biggest thing is, if you don't have that step, you can't, you can't go any further. Because you can put anything on paper you want, but at the end of the day, if there's nobody to see through. Wh- what what's the point? And I just, that's, I, you know, the the public feedback is is vital. To the to the next step before we get to that decision making and then the decision making. Uh, you know, the enforcement isn't even there for what we have currently dealing with the town, let alone. Trying to enforce a whole set of issues that we're not even prepared to to encumber yet.
And I'd be, I'd be, once they came with that, you know, we want to regulate, well, then we could sit down and say, oh.
Right.
Let's go over this, let's change this, let's, you know, here's our ideas. Yeah, I mean.
Just because I'm the chairman doesn't mean you have to agree.
They need to decide how they want to handle it.
So you feel that the board, well, again, I'm, I'm hearing. People say that they feel that the decision should be made by the board as to whether to regulate where, areas where they. May not be allowed.
Right, and then if they say they want to regulate, they want some feedback.
Does anyone disagree with that?
Well, might this mean that the planning board is standing by its original recommendation? Or is the planning board withdrawing its original recommendation of the Warrensburg plan?
We never recommended Warrensburg, we gave them our ideas. They changed them in the Warrensburg plan.
They chose the Warrensburg plan.
Yeah, but they made some changes in it. So we didn't really say use this, they wanted our.
And they made a lot of edits.
Right.
To it, yeah, right.
Because like I said, there it is, it's their decision again.
Right.
I mean, here, we gave them a bunch of things and they go, well, we don't like this, but we like this. You know, they liked our three year thing, and they didn't like the zoning board's one year permit thing. So they, you know, they picked and choose our ideas as far as what we, we thought.
Yeah.
At the time, we didn't think about regulate, all we thought about was, you know, just like Warrensburg did and the other, and Bolton Landing, everybody had it. And it sounds like they might want to regulate, well, then if that's the case, then come back to us and say, well, now we want to regulate it. What is, what's your feedback now? But they, then they've made the decision. And then we can go ahead and it won't be, well, here's our decision, our regulation, oh, now that you gave us, we decided not to do it, well, that was wasted everything. My opinion.
Does, does anyone strongly feel? That. I hate to do it, I hate to even ask it. Does anyone strongly feel that it should, uh, that they would like to say? That, that they should be regulated, they should be regulated where they go within the town.
I would like to say that.
Should, should we ask Barb?
Well, no, I've been listening the whole time, um, and so.
You have a comment, I guess, then, okay, never mind then, I just want to make sure.
Do you, do you have any comments, Barb?
I'm, I'm in full favor of a use tax to bring back money to the town that Josh recommended, I think that's vital. Um, I would like to see a survey monkey done, uh, like John has, uh, suggested. Uh, I'd like to get a pulse of what the people of our town feel and think. You know, the restriction by zone, um, um, I'm uncomfortable with that right now. I'm not, I'm not really comfortable, I, I just think that's restrictive for some and not restrictive for others. And, um, I, I guess, I'm, I'm not really in favor of that right now. Uh, it, you know, that, that kind of a solution.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Barb.
Does anyone else have anything that they really would like to add that would go to the board, the town board?
I just want to reemphasize enforcement. And the tax. I think those are the two issue, you know.
I, I would agree. I, I think the town's got to get something out of, out of this, I thought that was a great, uh, suggestion.
Okay.
Some kind of a use tax to come back to Luzern, and maybe that pays for our enforcement officer person.
Yes, with those pickleball courts and.
That's, that's right.
It's what the tax could be used for, hire somebody. Yeah, I know, I'm driving on the street.
Anyone else?
I mean, you're on the other committee, right?
Yes. And we haven't got into this, any of that yet.
I mean, the town board is not comfortable making any kind of decision, maybe they need to set up a committee to.
Do a survey or do something, right?
Do something that's not the zoning board, that's not the planning board. I mean, members from each comes in, but then other people from the community.
True, yes, and, and she came, she, she, somebody brought it up, I forget who it was, maybe it was her. That we need to get input from a lot of people in the town about changing the, you know, town's comprehensive plan, which. If that's what you want, you want the town involved, and if, if people don't respond, then they're gonna have to be happy with what they got, I guess.
Maybe they need to set up a committee to try to figure this out, besides it going back and forth and back and forth nonstop.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like we kind of do the same thing throughout the years, but, I mean, do you guys feel like this is kind of like? We go through this pattern of making recommendations that kind of floats the town board, and we never hear back, then we request an update, we don't really hear back. I mean, that was years ago, we talked about the RVs, made recommendations, and we talked about addressing the junk out from people's houses for a while, that I really got.
Nothing goes on.
So, I mean, it's kind of like, it's falling on deaf ears a little bit, but.
Okay. Anything else, John? Chairman? By the way, I get no vote in this, I just so that you know that, I, I don't get a vote on the town board, I don't get a vote on your committee.
Uh, we can't approve the minutes because we're missing participant that was there the night, so.
And we don't have a quorum because of that.
The only other thing as far as all new business is, um. And you guys might know this if you follow the town board. The Adirondack Folk School, in my opinion, is becoming a destination place. They said they had, at the meeting, they said like a thousand people over this year, or, um, and they want to expand. This is a brand new building they want to build, at the end of the parcel lot. So that eventually they could have two or three thousand people. And it's gonna bring more people to Lake Luzern, and hopefully more business. It's, it's, they're getting the land, and the town, the town owns the land, so they're going through a process right now. I can let you know that they're in discussions, I kind of met with them, started off with Karen. And I said, you guys get rid of the town board and clear, clear through them and go through, uh. Set of lo- boundary line adjustment, a merger, so they can merge the town's property to the other town's property and make it all one. For the folk school, so they can expand. Plus, they have to sign another lease, they, they leased the property from the town. So hopefully, it'll go through, and it seemed like the town board is very interested, they don't want to lose this business. You know, they, they already went off site to Lake George this last, uh, summer, building, uh, canoes, I think it was, or. Did really well, and they want to do it here, they don't want, they want to stay in Luzern, they want to be. And I just think it's gonna help the town out, and hopefully bring in more business. It's too bad your businesses are around.
I wish.
Because I think that brings people in too, I mean, you know, Meadows Meadows, Utopia, it's just a way of, uh, growing in the town. Or you know what you have to go through.
Yeah. I wanted to, uh, touch on something if I could.
Sure.
Again, I was reading one of the letters, and, and one of the letters mentioned, uh, bear slides kind of going on with. What's going on with Airbnb's and just the influx of tourists and stuff like that. And the town really not having control over, uh, what's going on right now, and not necessarily taking advantage of what's going on right now. I don't know if you guys are at all familiar, obviously, I own a tubing company in town, so I am keenly aware of what's going on up in Buttermilk in that area. How nice it's been, all that kind of stuff. The last three, four years, it's just gone completely downhill, um, up there, just getting trashed, garbage everywhere, and, um. To the point where I moved my business to the other side of the river, um, I'm gonna be putting it on the other side of the river, uh, starting this year. I still, and, you know, again, this is gonna come as a bias thing, but I'm selling the beauty of the area for my business, um. And the town, in my opinion, isn't necessarily taking advantage of the influx of tourists. And in a lot of ways, is doing the residents of, of the town a disservice, um, by just letting that be a complete free for all. Uh, up there, I've talked, I had a meeting with the DC a couple of weeks ago, um, talking about what's going on up there. They want to do something, but they don't know what to do, because the road is owned by the town going up through there. I don't know if this is a planning board issue or necessarily a town board issue, um, but I mentioned Million Dollar Beach and Lake George. I think a solution to what's going on up there that I think a lot of residents might be in favor of, um, because it would benefit them. Is to set up some sort of booth for access up into the Buttermilk area, where they charge non-residents, not residents, but non-residents. To access that for the day, so the town's getting some money back from it. The residents still go up there free, have access to their area, which is a beautiful area out there, and try to give it back more to the people.
Does the town own that?
So the town owns the road all the way up, and then it's state land, um, you know, beyond that, uh, but in talking with the state. Um, because we had discussions about parking and stuff, because parking is impossible up there on certain days. Um, they said that, that all parking restrictions would have to come from the town, because it's a town road going up through there. Um, so I don't know the, the logistics of it or anything, but I just wanted to bring that up, um. On the record is saying, I, I, I think the town is missing an opportunity there, not only for income. But also to allow its residents, um, to have a benefit, you know, to at least restrict it seasonally, where it's just out of control up there. Um, for now, so.
I mean, I'll, I'll bring it up in front of the comprehensive plan. We brought some stuff up already, and they're finding this year, they've okayed money, they have food trucks. And have the, uh, the concerts back next year, they've already got the money, so we can get a jump on it, because we missed out this year.
Yeah.
You know, more people coming to the area, going over there, the food trucks will help, and maybe we'll get somewhere.
And when you, the DC give you a response when you mentioned, so it'd be a town operated.
So I, I brought up.
To restrict access to state land, I guess.
Yeah, so it wa- it would be something that would need to be worked with the DEC, because it, I. I haven't talked to anybody at the town, this is the first time I'm bringing it up. When I talk to the DEC, they're not sure what to do yet, they came up with, basically, um, and I'll just let you get it. I got a letter in July saying, not just tubing companies, uh, but the general public is not allowed to access certain parts of that state land up there. Because it's getting trashed so much.
Where did that letter come from?
What's her name? Her, her first name's Becca, I couldn't tell you her last name, but it's the DEC, uh, out of Warrensburg.
Because DEC is working with the town to have, um. They're paying, the, they're working with the town to have the, some of the people on the highway crew. Clean up and improve some of the state areas up on that road. And, um, so, and they're actually providing money to cover the. Salaries of the people and the use of the equipment that they'd be using to the town to, to do that. So I, I know that there's already some, oh, cooperation between the town and the state. For something in that area now, how extensive it is, I don't really know, but that was discussed at town board meetings. I'm thinking that what you're saying, it should go to the town board.
Okay.
More so than, than this board.
Sure.
Only, only because it involves the road that the town owns. Which is going to bring in the highway superintendent into the conversation as well. And also, we need to find out legalities from the town attorney. You know, uh, as to some of your, your thoughts about putting a toll booth.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other question, if we hired a town constable, would they have the ability to enforce? Town laws and state land, I have no idea.
So that was one of the concerns of the state is, because they brought up wanting to put a booth up there. There, and they brought up using, uh, I want to say interns, but it's not interns, um. Whatever the state calls the people that take care of the land, kind of, they are voluntarily stewards, yeah, using stewards to occupy the booth. But there's safety concerns with kind of, uh, pushback that they expect, you know, from people, and who's gonna man the booth and all that kind of stuff. Um, but their main concern was safety, uh, of those people. So, just, I just wanted to share that, you know. We talked about avenues that may be getting this done on in terms of generating revenue.
The, the letter that you got from this Becca, I think Becca was the one that actually came to the town board meeting and, and talked to the town board. Was that to you as a business person that's using, utilizing that property?
It was to me, but it was, the restrictions that were laid out were not just for my business, but for the general public as well. So it's my understanding, you, you know, DEC, we talk about enforcement here, they're having the same problem. They have one ranger that can come around Friday and Saturday afternoons up there, that's it. That's all the funding they have, have, and if there's a fire going on somewhere else, that one ranger's not coming up there. But it was addressed to me, uh, laid out that all, everybody, uh, it's kind of same rules apply to everybody on the state land there. But they're gonna go up there and start putting rocks in to deny access to people in, in certain areas up there and stuff like that. Um, as part of their enforcement or deterrents, if you will, they've started to do it last year, they're gonna continue to do it more spots this year. Um, and they mentioned that that area as well as, um. I want to say Split Rock Falls, but whatever that shelving rock falls up in Fortin are two areas that are kind of getting highlighted right now. Um, so it might be a good opportunity for the town to kind of work with the DEC on that. Not on the riverside, you haven't been able to camp on the riverside for quite some time. Doesn't stop anybody from doing it until that one officer comes on Saturday night, but, yeah, yeah. It's a mess up there, though, it's bad, so.
And is it, do you have a sense of, is it people coming from other local towns, or is it people come from other states?
Yeah, so if I'm being totally honest, it's a lot of it's my fault, and the owner of Tubby Two's fault. And, uh, a, a company, yeah, I will, I will, you know, a, a company with the, the. The internet, I guess, you know, and people getting more used to using the internet. But we exposed that area, right, to thousands of people, you know, you went to the folk school, bringing a couple of that. My business, I had thirty-five thousand people last summer, vast majority of those people went tubing. Okay, that's by far my most popular activity, so. It's our fault that we kind of exposed the area, which is a good thing for the town and a bad thing, it's, it's a bad thing if the town doesn't take advantage of it and, and kind of regulate it. But I, in speaking to resident, I personally feel guilty, I'm a lifelong resident of Luzern. I feel guilty, I'm trying to do my best to kind of push back on that, you know, and go to the other side of the river, give back that side of the river to the locals, if you will. Um, but the cat's out of the bag now, which is a good thing and a bad thing. Uh, because good thing is, a lot of people know about it, a lot of people still want to go, and a lot of people will still pay some money to go up there and go on their own and do their own thing up there. And the town can take advantage of that, I believe. Um, because, like I said, the, the road going up, and it would have to be discussed, but the road going up is a town road. The only access to up there is through the town. So, yeah. And it would give locals a chance to get up there first for free, still, you know, with less people going up there, so.
No, I, I could see how, um, I thought our conversation tonight was, was worthwhile, I learned some good things out of it. Can see the value of serving the community to get a gauge on. What the, uh, attitude is on short term rentals, so, um. I get it, it makes sense, you know, and moving forward, and I'm sure that'll be valuable for, for all of us.
I mean, it's still right that you express your opinion at this point.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're right to do it.
Okay.
Tony? Hey, I, uh, make a most free. Making end of the meeting.
Thank you, John.
All in favor?